Ms. Southfield, Public Schools Board of Education is called to order. I am Rance Williams, President of the Board of Education.
Deputy Vice Secretary.
I'm Michael Poole, Board of Representatives.
Thank you, Louis, Board Trustee.
Uh, Daryl B. Joyce, Board Trustee.
Linda Woods, Superintendent.
Debbie Trent, Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services.
And our Vice President, Charles, is absent. An approved absentee, and we're waiting to have him have not heard from. He's suspended, so he wants to go to the presidency. So we'll get started. Public hearing, open the meeting as done. Truth of Taxation.
Um, Kate Nankovich, our Director of Finance, put together a little PowerPoint, but we're not sure how to work the new system. So I think we have some notes. Do you have any notes, everyone? Okay, she's just gonna go over quickly what truth of taxation is, why we hold this meeting for this year. I think we reached out with the handles. You know, the... She's... Sure. No. We said it was just about rent, but... Oh, okay. Okay.
Sure.
Those are not happy, okay. That's important, okay. Well, what do I want then? I can do a little introduction?
Sure.
Getting the one and all.
Getting the...
The purpose of the public hearing is, under Michigan law, we are required to give notice, public hearings are safe prior to the event. Um, and this is part of the budget process. As we know, the taxes on both the court are operating mileage. Um, operations and the general fund is also our debt service mileage. And you know, so for... Now that you have a copy in front of you, on the sun golden exposure rate for the 15, 16 fiscal year, to see the first two lines of the bracket you have, which are operating and whole harmless notice. Those funds are used to, um, help provide for our foundation grant, um, our whole people funding that needs to stay in Michigan, to stay a permanent amount for our 15, 16 fiscal year. Our foundation grant is $10,971. Part of that is raised from our non-homestead properties. Um, we levy 18 mil on those properties. And essentially, a mil is the dollar value that is taxed for every $1,000 worth of taxable value of these property assets. Under proposal A, because the district has the higher than the state-based foundation, we need to, are allowed to levy whole harmless notice in order to bring that number up. And the whole harmless mileage will remain the same as it has been in the last several years at 16.9868 mil. So again, just to give you an idea, um, if you were looking at a $50,000 taxable value piece of, um, property, the non-homesteads of 19.98, it's just roughly a thousand, under $1,000. That's you. Um, we are also, um, levying for our debt service fund, and our debt service helps pay for the interest and principal on the bonds that were borrowed on the construction project. Currently, it's, um, we have about 60, um, 6 million dollars worth of savings bonds. And in order to fulfill our debt obligation for the 15, 16 fiscal year, we will need to levy about three mils, which is a reduction from last year. Last year, we levied 3.2 mils. And we are, so we have... Here you go with that, yeah. So as we're paying down on our, on our debt obligation, we're able to, um, reduce that rate. So that, again, is the other rates that we're asking, will be later asked with your approval on, as you may be under the agenda, this is strictly the hearing portion. So three mils on debt service, the whole harmless up at 16.9868, rate and operating mileage. To continue on then, on the next...
At homestead, I just wanna make sure we are, and I think we do, but I just wanna go over. At homestead, these are primary residence and personal commercial property, correct?
Correct. So if you have a residence going, it's rented out, then it would be considered a non-primary residence, and it would be subject to the 18 mil rate.
And then the non-homestead, all other properties such as business, rental, what do you mean when you say rental?
As I was saying, if you owned, um, a second home, and you rented it out, you would be subject to the 18 mil rate.
That's not for rentals, people who are in, I'm just asking, in apartments. They don't...
No, it's based on the owner, the property.
Based on the owner. But apartments off of 12, right behind my home, those individuals in that property, Franklin Road.
They don't pay...
They don't pay taxes.
They don't pay income, or property tax.
Two of us.
The owner of the apartment...
The owner of the apartment does.
Would be paying...
Just wanna make that clear. Okay.
So we can see, um, on the next, um, page or slide, um, taxable value summary for just in fiscal year. Um, overall, non-homesteads, you see, only increase at 1.12%. Um, the homesteads, the, um, the personal residences, um, personal commercial property went up 1.16% for overall, and went overall increase of 1.15%. And this is important, um, because when you look at the percentage increase, um, under that amendment, it was part tied to proposed wage. There's indications of property tax, if your property values were increasing, um, greater than the rate of inflation, when you also look at any type of conditions, um, in law of the year, you would have to reduce your mileage, um, so that the tax management wouldn't be, um, gaining a windfall of taxes, strictly because of an increase in property values. Based on these numbers that we see, um, there will be no rollback in the coming year.
Because the property value went down, should've gone up. Correct.
Pardon?
Because property value is not gonna down.
Well, actually, we see they're going up very slightly, but they're not, they're not exceeding that rate of...
Correct.
Okay.
And then, um, the next slide basically just, again, shows, um, the foundational rate. Then we hear that the district receives, um, next year will be $10,971. That's the state's recommendation for our foundational allowance. Again, it's coming from a number of components. The state payment portion, that's as a result of that. State education tax and income taxes that are, um, distributed through the districts around the, um, states. Our operating taxes, that's where that 18 mil comes in on our non-primary residence property. And then the whole homestead, um, whole harmless taxes of the 15 mil, um, 15.98 mil. I think I already touched upon the debt, the debt mill rate? Yeah, it includes all my remarks for today, and I'll throw in additional questions.
Uh, do you have any questions from the board? Seeing that we have some members in the audience, do you have any questions from anyone in the audience?
Well, I thank all of you for your time and attention, and hope you have a question.
Thank you. I'll call for a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting. Would that be adjourned, this portion of our meeting?
Second.
It's been properly moved. Second. Call for a question. On our discussion, this portion of the meeting is adjourned. Okay, we move into our organizational, board organizational meeting. Call for a motion to open the agenda for our board organizational meeting.
I move over to open, um, the organizational portion of our meeting.
Support.
Properly moved and supported, this portion of the meeting is open. Turn it over to our...
Yes, and, uh, and we have the action items. And, uh, so...
I'd move the open report number 53107, Amendment to the 2014-2015 Appropriations Act. Second. Properly moved and second. I'll move right into the Amendment to the 2014-2015 Appropriations Act.
Uh, good evening.
Always have a conference. Keep up going.
Um, I just made a few notes on the changes. This is the Second Amendment to the 1415. What we do and what you'll see tonight, we, um, adopt our proposed budget in June of the previous year. A lot of the numbers at that time are not known for sure. You know, we have an estimated pupil count, we have estimated what the state's going to give us, property values and things like that. So at this time, we do a proposal. Then we usually come back and do our First Amendment, sometime around mid-year. Sometimes, um, this year was a little earlier, we did it in November, sometimes we do it in January, but we have more information, we amend it at that time. Then at the end of the year, we amend it for the last time, so that we can get as close to actual as possible. And the reason that's important is because our estimate of fund balance at this time is also our beginning point for our proposal for next year. So that's why the, um, amendment this year, we try to get as close as possible to actual. So at this time, we're, um, proposing to change our revenues from 88 million, 88.8 million, to 87.8 million. And the difference is it's down about 700,000, and that mostly has to do with current year tax tribunal. So, you know, you can go in July to do your MTPs, and then, I think there's another one in January, and you can go to the board of tribunals, and you could apply your taxable assessment. And this year, we lost another 700,000 in those. This is supposed to be slowing down. It has slowed down some for us, but for us, that, you know, this is still a huge number, because in the past, we were losing 3, 4 million a year, but I was still shocked to see that it was this large this year. But that's the, the main difference in the revenues from, um, November till now. Expenditures were down about 2 million. At this time of year, we go through and we try to cut all of the budgets, so that they look as close as what they're going to be to actual. So salary and benefits were down a little bit, not a lot, about 300,000, we've had that pretty tight. Um, purchase services, supplies. The biggest thing was that our taxes abated on, and that's for tax abatements and assessments that go to the state tribunal. So this, the 700,000 is off, that's current year, handled by the City of Southfield. If they don't get what they want from the City of Southfield, they can go to the state tribunal, it's another level. And they had a big backlog there, and we've been seeing anywhere from 4 to 5 million dollars a year that we've had to pay back in taxes after someone won their assessment. You know, so they lowered it, and because we're commercial and industrial, a large part of our, um, taxable property, those are really big for us. So, um, it has slowed down, most of those have moved through the system. We had held out 3 million in the budget this year. I've taken a million and six out of that, because I don't think that we're going to, we only have one more payment coming through, and unless that's a big one, we'll all cross our fingers, this is not, but it seems to be slowing down. So we were able to take that down and lower the, um, expenses by about 2 million. So what that does is, the First Amendment, go to the second page here. Um, revenue, if we...
Should we go to the second page?
Yeah, go to page 2 or 3, at the bottom. What that says, it shows our local revenue, local state and other, our total revenue, we're expecting to be 87.8 million. And our expenses at the 80, expenses at 95.4 million. So we're looking at an operating deficit of 7.6. That means we're spending more than we're bringing in by 7.6 million. So starting with our fund balance at the end of last year of 21 million, you take away that 7.6 million that we're expected to spend, more than we're bringing in, leaves us with an expected fund balance at the end of this year of 13 million.
And board, for your clarification, further clarification, that is exactly what we show to the public and our public hearings, just wanna make sure we all do, pass right back to you.
On the next page, we always break it down by function, and function is important because it shows you what we're doing with the money. If you look at the first four lines on your opinion, under expenditures, it has instruction, basic programs, added needs, support services, and pupil. Those first four lines, which you notice are 44, 57, 67, almost 60, plus 60 million of our 95 million dollar budget, is spent on, um, instructional programs entirely. Basic programs are elementary, middle, and high school teaching, so our, um, teachers and their salaries and benefits. Added needs is our special ed and career and technical ed. Support services are your counselors, psychologists, speech pathologists, and social workers. So the very largest part of our budget is tied up in those things, as it should be. And we've worked hard over the years, I remember when I came, we were hired in other areas, operations and administration, and we've lowered those and moved it back into the classroom, which we're very proud of. So and then going down from there, the pretty self-explanatory, general ed, school administration, business. And when you look at business, 2.4 million, that might make you think that our business office is way out of whack. Basically, didn't have any of the office, I'm not gonna give those taxes, but there was, you know, a million seven in taxes abated in that number. But because the state tells us how, by function, we have to account for these things, um, it has to show up there under the numbers. So and then the rest of them, operations, transportation, those have steadily either held steady or dropped down considerably when we privatized, so it's just another way of looking at it. It shows again revenue and expenses and our projected fund balance.
Kevin, does that, um, in the teachers' salary in one half a year, does this price include, um, the benefits too?
Yes. Yes, it's all rolled up. There's two different ways of looking at your budget. A lot of times, we look at object. Object part of the account code shows, so what? Is it a salary? Is it a benefit? This kinda shows more of where it's spent, in the high school, in the administration building, so it kinda breaks it down a different way for you.
Okay.
Okay, on the next page, again, nope, that's all good. I guess we go back to the first page, I kinda skipped over. We're also amending our debt retirement fund and our food services fund. The debt retirement fund has had very little change over the year from what we originally approved. We're going to bring in 2,000 more in revenues and expense, which is again, why we're lowering the debt levy next year, because our property values are bringing in more money than we need. Can't do anything else with that debt money, except pay your debt off, so we don't need to levy, and if we can relieve some of the burden on the community, we do. Um, food service fund, again, we just made this so that it would show up closer to, um, actual as I hear, and very small changes, they are self-supporting. So this negative 293,000 does not attach to the general fund at all. So the food service fund totally supports itself and makes money and buys its own equipment, things like that, which is different from years past. If you remember, probably five years ago, we were supplementing, before we privatized, it was costing us a couple hundred thousand dollars a year or more. So, any questions?
So, with that, um, Secretary, I call for a motion.
Okay, um, trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Wollia?
Yes.
My side, yes. Five, eight, yes.
Okay, thank you. A call for a motion to open report 53108, Assistant to 2015-2016 Operator.
I can already open that. Um, I got the operating numbers for 2015-16. Somebody else support it?
Support. We move, properly move next to fourth. Call for a question. Where we have questions, if they have any, walk us through this.
Sure. Okay, our proposal for 15-16. Assumptions that we use was that the revenue rate would be at 25.78 for the full year, which is a little bit of an increase, even though the state is putting money in to hold that, that steady. Because it went up halfway through the year last year, we had the benefit of a little bit of a lower rate for about three months, so, um, proposed, or what I did was, um, do a proration, it was about 25.54 for last year. This year, it'll be 25.78 for this entire year, so it's a little bit more. Made the increase about between 5 and 6%, so we use that as an assumption. Um, we lose the loss of 184 students, is what we're assuming. Property values, I'm kind of leaning that steady, because we have not, we, across the county, they're seeing 2 to 3% increases, and we got 1. And then, we lost tribunals during the year, so I'm, I'm not really projecting an increase in property values as it's technically the same. So the residents that we're projecting for next year are down about 3.4 million from this year. The largest piece of that is entirely the loss of students that we're looking at. Also, the categorical, um, that we don't, we are losing next year, and we do know that at this point, but we didn't really put this together, but it'll, it'll come pretty close to what we had anticipated, that they did take best practices away, they took away the performance categorical, so we are losing that money. We also are losing almost a million dollars in rental income, and that's, um, primarily the rental of, uh, the Kennedy Center, because we're not using that for our special ed center. There also was some rental of the Channel, that if we were gonna sell that facility, we will lose that income too. But hopefully, we'll make it up with the sale of the property. So, um, the expenses are down about 1.6 million. We have a reduction in staffing. Um, recently, and, um, Derek Lopes has went through the staffing this year and did a very good job of tightening up staffing to, um, rightsize the district for the amount of students that we have, and something that we talked about before. That's an ongoing battle. Every year, as we lose students, we have to really look at our staffing, because you see that 80-some percent of our budget is staffing, there, there really is nothing else. So we're looking at a reduction of 15-plus teachers, so that takes us down about 2 million dollars. But then we had to add back in the Kennedy Learning Center this year, and that's gonna cost us about a million and three for next year. We won't see any relief from the state or, um, PA 18, which is the special ed money that comes through the county until the year after. All of those calculations are based on previous year expenses. So we have to put the money out, and then we will get that for another year. We had a reduction of a staff member in the HR department.
No, that's one question, that's one. So I just to know that, these pages were in West Romeville, and then, then funds were there, so now we have to, um, create funds to accommodate these kids, and revise the school property to, 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 um, also locate them there. So that's a different expenditure that, um...
Right, yes, it is.
Yeah. Add expenditure.
And the hope is that it will even itself out and pay for itself in the future, but it's a lag, so you have to put some money out to bring them back, and make sure that we have a really nice facility for them, and then we'll, we'll get money back in later years. So, um, supplies, it's down about a half a million, and that's because we took out the, um, we have still about 300,000 of our textbook purchases that ran over into this year. One of, I don't remember which one of the vendors, Dr. Brinkwood, but they allowed us to split that payment, to take all of the payment out of the first year and 400,000 out of the second. And then we had some uniform purchases last year that we won't have next year. We also lowered our capital outlay expenses for next year, we took out the capital refresh, which is about a half a million dollars, because looking at the numbers and seeing that we were, you know, heading on the slide again, we thought that we better put that off, and so we took that back out of the budget. Tax abatements, again, good news, I cut about 0.8 out of it, we're gonna leave it right around 500,000. We did some, um, looking into it, and we think that that should cover us for next year. That backlog is through, so we should be on a normal steady cycle now. And outgoing expenses, again, we do save a little bit for the Kennedy Learning Center the first year, because of tuition, we pay about 3 or 4 million dollars in tuition for, um, children that we send to center programs. By the end of the month, we save that tuition. So those are the major changes. So next year, we're looking at, um, proposed revenues of 84.6 million and proposed expenditures of, let me see, around 93.8. So we're looking to have an operating deficit again of 9.1 million. So we're going to spend 9.1 million more of revenue, that's going to come out of our, um, projected fund balance from this year of 13.3, and will leave us with 4.1 million fund balance projected at the end of next year. And again, you can see the breakdown underneath that, whereas in, um, the first four items again, are, most of the money is always in classrooms. Also, for next year, and, more President Williams asked me, and it's not in the one that's in your packet, but I will give them a new one to put in the packet, so that it goes into our board notes, but I added where we start into the debt part of this, and that is halfway through page three. And right after it says, be it further resolved that the total amount of mileage levied for general operating purposes in tax year 215 shall be 16.9868 mils. That covers the general fund. After that, the next line is be it further resolved that the total debt retirement fund appropriations of the Southside Public Schools for fiscal year 216 are as follows. Now we're talking about the debt fund again. So we're looking at...
Totally separate, I understand.
Totally separate, have to be kept separate, all we can do is just pay our debt payment, we cannot use that for anything else. So we're thinking that we'll bring in 7 million with that 3 mils. We've dropped that down from 3.5 to 3.2 to 3 this year. And the expenditures, again, are mostly the redemption of principal, which is, this is on a schedule, that we have to pay out into, you know, numerous years. The interest on that, and then there's some taxes abated, they hit that line, so expenditures be 7.2. So we're looking at a projected balance this year, at the end of June, of a million eight. Um, we will spend a little bit more than we bring in next year, and the year with a million six. The reason we like to sit on a little fund balance there is that we've actually had a couple of years where the property values weren't where we expected them to be, and we didn't have enough money in the debt fund to pay the principal and interest in it. So we'll kind of keep a little cushion there, and it'll often help in the wash.
And we, as a board, said, we would keep how much in our general fund?
General fund, we're supposed to be keeping at 10%, which 4 million at the end of next year, if it's not 10%, we'd have to have about 8 million, so about 5%. Um, and then again, we also approve, I think it's back on the first page. Yes, we also approved the food services fund, which are 1,280, the 3.1, we're eating up a little fund balance. But again, that doesn't touch the, the general fund in any way, they're self-supported.
So board, we go from 21, uh, 21, 21 million dollars, everyone talking about being on the fund balance. We believe that there will be, well, no, I believe it's actually 7.6 reduction for this 2014-2015, which brings us down, that fund balance down to 13.4. And we just talked about the operating budget, which is 9, 9.2 deficit. So you, 13.4 minus your 9.2, gives you the 4.1, that's been projected, what we have put out to the community. That's what I wanna make sure of, and I understand, we all understand, how the community can talk. Yes. So the numbers are in my batch.
Right. Okay. Um, trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rafferty, yes? Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
And...
Thank you. Mr. Trustee, they put a recognition, known that trustee Smith just gave.
Thank you.
Right. Trustee Smith, if you have any questions, you can give us on these two items. Okay. Can you touch base on 2016-2017?
I do have that with me.
So we have to present 2016-17 this year to the state?
This has to be put, because transparency has to go on the website, it does not have to be board approved, and it is not subject to state, but the state has a committee that is going out and checking our website, to make sure that all of our transparency information is out there.
And should they see something that our fund balance is in deficit, where we get help?
Yeah, and I number these, but we don't have to hand these back in, 'cause this will be posted on the website.
So do the early warning, if they see this, and we show a deficit in our fund balance, let's make it come down and help us.
Exactly.
How much help?
The way you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, right.
Deficit elimination plan, yeah.
Okay, these numbers are predicated on the imagined 2020 savings for the year 1618. Um... I also have another one here. Please, I will need back. Listening to all of the questions that came up, trying to be as transparent as possible, and have some good information here to explain everything that we've been doing. So for 1617, what we did was we built in the 8.3 million savings from the Imagine 2020. And that's where you see that...
Your own sheet.
Your own sheet, Debbie? Yeah, okay. So with that, we would have, our revenue stayed the same, it wouldn't affect our revenue, and we are using a 200 student loss of students again, so it drops down the revenue to 83 million. Our expenditures, though, taking the 8.3 million out of it, drops them down to 85 million. So we're only at an operating deficit of a million two, which is worst case. That's without any help from the state. That's with the highest student loss that we, you know, project. We'll probably do better. What I did on this, so that you can understand this sheet here, this is the one that's kind of important. There's two different areas here. The first one is the Imagine 2020 plan A, including everything. So that includes Adler. The one at the bottom, because Adler seemed to be a bonus contention, I just wanted to show the difference. So without Adler in it, so you'll see, again, I'm showing for all the different years, revenue, expenditure, and expected fund balance. You notice at the top that we start with the 4.1 fund balance for 1516, and then it drops down 2.9, 1.6, it starts going into deficit in 1819, to the tune of 2.3, and then 8.5. I added another line underneath it, because I know we've talked about it, but it's hard without having a visual to see that. If we have a $3 million variance at the end of the year, which I hope we do, you know, at the end of the year, we cut down as close as we can, but we can't cut it to the bone. Like I said, I don't know what the subcups are. We haven't got that. We don't have all of our utility bills. We don't have all of our legal bills. We don't have that last tax payment, which can be a big one. There's a lot of things that come in all the way through the end of June, and also into July before the auditors come, that get charged back to this year's budget. So I'm hoping for a $3 million variance. If we have that $3 million variance, and you look at that, so if we add that to 1516, it takes you to a $7 million fund balance. The next year, 8.9, 10.6, 9.6, 6.5. Imagine 2020 will actually have us out of deficit and with an actual fund balance of eight percent by 1920, which is where we want to go. Without Adler, if you do the same thing at the bottom, you'll see that we're out of deficit with that $3 million variance, and you can't, you can't bank on that. That's a hopeful. But if that happens, and you know, past practice shows that we do have a variance at year end, we would only have $61,000 in our fund balance at 1920, which is not sustainable. When you get that low, what happens is you can't make your payments over the summer months, so then you have to start borrowing, and I don't want to borrow. Once you start borrowing, you never get out of it, because the interest costs you money that you don't have, so you just start digging yourself a hole. So that's why we've always tried to make sure, and why we passed the board policy, that we would keep at least 10 percent, and that's what our target is. That's so that we have operating money through the summer, and we don't have to start borrowing.
So another way to say that is, in 2019, 2020, we'd be back in front of the community with additional cuts.
Exactly. And we would need big ones, because they snowball really quickly.
And again, Debbie, these are projections, correct?
Yes, they are projections. So I would like everyone to turn these back into me, please, because this is fluid. I, Dr. Wood, never talk in, and I change those. Every time I get information, I change it, and I date it, and so then I share it with Dr. Wood, so we keep going from, you know, month to month, so we know what's coming at us and what's hitting us. But we try to keep that five-year rolling budget reduction out there, so that we aren't surprised. So we know ahead of time, we have time to make corrections. Anything else?
Very good. No, you don't have the photo back. But we have the photo on our website.
She wants it back.
Yes, she wants it back.
No, no, just a projection.
No, she did. She wants it back.
You can, because I did number them, but they're going to go right on the website, so that's public information. We'll be posting that shortly.
I'm going to be on the other side.
I'm so used to numbering them.
When's you going to have to leave? Okay. You know what, though? In case we have questions, I'm just going to do it right now. If we have questions in the audience regarding the budget, I'll ask you to hold the mic and ask the question. I want you to fully understand what's... If there are no questions, we'll move on. Report number 53109, I call for motion to open report number 53109. Notice of requirements for meeting of public bodies. I move that we open a report number 53109. Notice of requirements for meeting of public bodies. Board, give a little background, Dr. Wood.
Yes, we have to always post for a meeting, such as a study session, special board meeting, and regular board meeting. And those notices must be posted 18 hours, business hours, in advance.
I think that's... Can you share where this would be posted?
On the door, correct?
Yes, on the door.
Is it possible, I got it already going, is it possible, so if the community doesn't come to JWE, how are they informed about meeting?
For the truth in taxation, I don't, this is for the requirements of public bodies, because that would be posted. For the truth in taxation, we have to post in the paper six days prior to meeting. So this one was posted in the paper.
The public act requires for the regular board meetings that the notice is posted where the board resides, and that is this administration building. For special meetings, we do the same thing, but we also post special meetings on the website. And also, this list of regular board meetings is posted on our website as well.
Correct. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson, yes?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
I call for motion to open report number 53110, as the naming of the bank deposits. A little background, just a little community.
What we do is give you a list every year of where we'll be depositing our funds, where we'll be investing funds. And so, we have a list here. The money moves between them, and we've added some this year, because we have, it's something that's been on the horizon for quite a while, but we didn't have any money. So we wanted to start being more aggressive with our investments when we had that 20,000 or $20 million fund balance. So we've added a few on here, and we are making some interest out of our money right now. But all this is just letting you know, so the board is well-aware and approves that this is the only place. I think it's a safeguard for the district, so that we don't go out and just use any place that we want to. And we state with very, you know, certificates of deposit, we don't do anything risky whatsoever. I will open the report 5310.
Support.
And we just had discussion, any other discussion with the board?
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson, yes?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
I call for motion to open report 53111, as the naming of professional services. I move that we open report number 53211, naming of professional services. Properly moved and supported, I ask for just a little background.
This is much the same. We give a listing of who our auditor's going to be, so the board is aware of that, what attorneys that we use throughout the year, and also our architect, which is IDF, and Sandtech is actually SHW Group. It's not a change, it's a change in their name. The paragraph at the bottom, though, also makes you aware that in addition, the superintendent has the authority to use other law firms as needed, because sometimes things come out, and we do have to call someone else. But these are the ones that we use on a regular basis.
Questions from the board? Do we have little questions?
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you. Call for motion to open report number 53112, as the appointment of a representative to Middle Cities Risk Management Trust.
I'm going to open appointment, a representative to Middle Cities Risk Management Trust.
That's supported. Exactly. Properly moved and supported. Call for questions, a little more questions, get a little background.
Middle Cities is our self-insurance for property casualty insurance, and it's, instead of going with one of the large pools, we've stayed with this one, like Seth said, there are some bigger ones out there. The thing I like about Middle Cities is that they're so responsive to our needs. I actually sit on the executive board, and we talk through every single thing, everything that's been going on. We've been hit hard the last couple of years because of a lot of large claims from Pontiac schools. We did have to fight some of those, because they came in after the fact, and they didn't seem that they were great on. But they're awesome to work with as far as insurance claims. They're looking right now at some new things, like cybercrime, we try to stay ahead of the ball on that. And we've been able to, in the last few years, get some rebates back, some insurance money back from the pool. So so far, it's been a good choice for the district.
Any questions from the board? A question, second call from the board.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Thank you. Call for motion, number 53113, as appointment to MEISL Board Trustees.
And it's much the same, they age out.
I move the open 1113, appointment to MEISL Board Trustees.
So they're properly moved and supported. Call for questions, if there are any questions, can you give a little background?
Yes, much the same thing. This is our self-insure for work discount. So it's the same thing as the pool, and if you call, it will be our representative.
Any questions from the board? Any questions called from the board?
Okay. Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson, yes?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Okay. So now, we're going to information, and these do not require both on the board, 5314, as a school district legal reference note. I think we've got the opportunity to review it, review it. I'll just open it up for questions. Anyone have questions or concerns or need more clarity on it? Okay. Now, we come to round eight. Yeah, can you move the audience through it, just in case?
This is the superintendent recommending that these notes be added, the legal name of the school district, that we are classified as a general power school district, operated by law, the seven members, and on here, it gives each of the members and their, the expiration of their current term, and if they're elected for seven years in the November election.
Six years.
Oh, yeah.
Is that right?
I can read.
Eight, nine.
That's okay.
Three, four, five.
Trustee Smith, the other thing, we'll start rounding, Trustee Smith.
I commend everyone for their courage the other night. I'm pleased to see community members here tonight, and I'm pleased that we were able to handle the business, even as tough as it was, that we were able to handle it in such a responsible way the other night, so.
Good.
And I look forward to seeing all of our graduates on...
Absolutely. Trustee Joyce?
I am.
Yeah, I was a little disappointed. I heard from the community, I heard them loud and clear, and I was a little surprised at the fact that I didn't get the responses that I had asked for. And even now, I'm still waiting for responses that I had asked for, which I, which I don't want to go into detail, Mr. President, but this is my time. Let me have my space. So, never got that many calls from community members. I got so many calls from community members, I asked the superintendent to take my phone abroad, the website. That's how many calls I got. She did respond, and I thank you for that. Matter of fact, I think she took everyone's phone abroad there. Unbelievable, the response that we got from the community. And unfortunately, we have an EM in Lansing, but we also have an EM in the community, too. And I've been hearing from community members, and it hasn't been, it hasn't been positive. Now, a lot of... You say EM? Emergency manager. In what? In Lansing. And we have an emergency manager in the community, too. Living in the community. No, it's the community. They can eliminate us, too. They can eliminate, eliminate us, still. You referred to, I'm trying to understand this. Let me finish, let me finish. I've got it for her. You do, but I have a question. And the question is, I'm trying to get clarity, that's all I'm asking. I'm not challenging you. I'm just wanting to understand, I do not understand. Can you just help me out? A question, what's your question? But when you say EM in the community, referring to our constituents? Absolutely, thank you. I can answer. Okay. The voters, the voters, taxpayers, got you, I got you. All right, okay. And they weren't happy. I think it was demonstrated at the meeting as well. And we see these people on a daily basis, and I know there's at least four recall petitions on the street, now probably one for all seven of us. And the election's August, and I'm not threatening, I'm just telling you what I'm hearing in the community. We could be looking at a whole new board by the end of this year. And you know what that means, that relates to the superintendent. So, that's what I'm hearing from the community. I do not like the fact that we put Morris Adler on that list of closed. It was very obvious at that meeting that the community didn't like that either. It doesn't make sense, adds blight. It's the only, one of the few elementary schools we have in the neighborhood, and Morris Adler is truly in the neighborhood. You're going to add blight to the community. For the first time since the Great Recession, I'm starting to see people move back into the community, move children, and they're going to walk probably to school. It doesn't make any sense to take them off. Well, I know there's 320-plus kids at that school. It's about, has been the last forty years. It has one of the few planetariums that was donated to the district in the state. So we're going to increase our bus costs, and I've been in with Durham, and they are not cheap, and they do nothing for free. It's going to add to the, it's going to take away from, it can have an impact on the community, because the parents that were dropping their kids off and going to Tim Hortons, or going to the original Pancake House for breakfast, or whatever they might do, that's gone. There's going to be a cost associated for us to maintain a closed building in a number of different ways. And I don't need to go into various ramifications as it relates to that, but what disturbed me even more was the recommendation by the task force. And that recommendation from the task force was made up of people that used to sit in these seats, too. And I bet they've made more mistakes than we have. They know more about what we're doing than we do. Former mayor, a sitting city councilman, a sitting mayor, other board members that have served this community, clearly stated, do not close any current building. That resonates with me. Now, there are three things that I've learned in this life. Three things. One, there is a guy. Two, no one in this room is that. And three, after many years of business experience and business education, I've learned that you can't apply business principle to government. And three, after many years of business experience and business education, I've learned that you can't apply business principle to government money, it don't work. It just doesn't work. So with that, I move that we take the Morris Adler off the list to be closed immediately. To be taken off the list, to be closed, to remain open, be clear.
I support it.
The decision. Are you done?
Yeah, it's been properly seconded. I made a motion, it's been properly seconded.
And, do I need to make the point of order? We've already made that decision as a board, as a governing board. We're at round table. You're discussing, you're making your opinion now.
No, I made a motion, I made a motion. I made a motion, Mr. President, I think you need to check.
I would, I would, uh, Poole, Robert was a voter who's been doing this since nineteen seventy eight.
Seventy two, permit.
That's fine, I fully understand that. And if you want to take the vote, you should do it in a study session, as we're supposed to. But right now, we're at, we're at a round table, we're at.
I, I think you're out of order, Mr. President, I think, I think you're out of order, I think you're out of order.
I'm open to floor, I'm saying.
And I made a motion, it's been properly seconded.
You want to vote on it, we can vote on it.
I think we have to.
We've already voted on it.
I think we have to. No, we have, we voted on Plan A.
That's right.
We voted on Plan A. We're taking Morris Adler out of Plan A.
That's part of Plan A.
Well, the motion, a motion's been made and properly seconded, okay?
Oh, we, we, I'm secretary, call for the vote, and I will let this. Once again, I want to, before you call for that vote, I want to go on record. It is not appropriate at this point in time during round table discussion to go back and undo what this board has already done. I understand your concern.
Well, do you want me to, do you want me to change it and make an amendment to Plan A?
The amendment should have come when we were voting on Tuesday. That's when it has been appropriate to make the amendment. I would ask, but you got the motion in your board?
Second, it's been properly moved and seconded.
It's EM properly.
Well, it's been properly moved and seconded.
But it's not proper, it's not proper, Mike.
Well, you have an attorney in, in the audit section.
Well, based on the fact that the board is already taking action on it, really the appropriate motion would be a motion to rescind the earlier vote or to rescind it in part, uh, the board would have that option. However, in order to make that motion, um, the only board member who would be allowed to make the motion would be someone who voted, uh, the opposite way of the motion.
It was P.
Okay. And I would, I'm sorry, let me say it differently. The board member who'd be allowed to make that motion would be a member who was on the prevailing vote, on the prevailing side of the votes. That's when you can, a, a motion to rescind can properly go to the floor.
Okay. Now, I heard from the attorney and I've heard from one of our board members. And since we have a stale meeting, and I'm not trying to be difficult at all, I want to do what's right. I've always been a pro and will continue to be, what's right. I will ask that you move it, we table it, and we have further discussion.
Well, it's been properly moved and seconded. But I say we vote on it and, and be done with.
But it's not, in accordance to.
Well, it's, it's, it's not, it's not gonna be prevailing anyway. If that's what the law says. But it, as far as I understand, parliamentary procedures, we got four members here that are here and present and ready to do business.
We have four.
And ready to do business for the district.
Right. I'm able to.
And, 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 it, it is what it is, we can take the vote and be done with it, or we can table it for later.
I would, I would recommend, that's fine, that's what I'm saying, so that you run the book, I recommend we table it and have a further discussion, that's my recommendation.
Now, 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 the whole time, time out.
I might have a floor.
No, according to the attorney, it would have to come from someone else. Because I was on the opposing side.
Right.
The, the motion to rescind itself would have to come from somebody else unless, and I, I mean, again, I don't want to split hairs or anything. But a, a competing motion would have to be materially different enough than that which the board took action on, on Tuesday. So, I mean, again, what would come, what would make a materially different motion? I mean, that's a longer discussion, because you're talking about the board took a fairly large and broad action on Tuesday. So, I mean, again, it's not impossible for someone from the side who didn't prevail to make the motion, but it would have to be structured in a very careful manner. If I, if I made a recommendation, I would say, if the board wants to take it up again, then it would be, you know, a motion to rescind could be brought and it could be discussed and the board could take action again.
That's what I'm requesting, so that we have it right, so that we do it right, so I can ask. I have no problem with that, but I want to do it right. So I'm asking you to reset.
I'll reset.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. This is why we as board members, and we better go ahead and do it, I'll have, I'll have, I'll have.
Well, well.
We're not voting, right, you reset.
Right, okay.
You reset.
So, we're not.
You have anything?
No.
No. This is why we as board members attend all the classes at fifteen, and it's good discussion and debate here, because these are things that we, and we need to make sure the public understands. But we as board members, all, all of us, I know, I know you personally, all of us want to do the right thing. And what board member wants to bring this back up, I have no problem with it. But my concern is, if we do that now, we will undo what we just voted on here. And that's not proper. I just think we voted on it, we all, we all, I didn't hear any notes, we all voted yes. So, but I'll leave that alone. Thanks again, Trustee Poole, you'll bring this back, we have further discussion, we want to do the right thing. Not saying it's not right, that's just a feel, it's improper to. With that, I concur, this was a very difficult decision, of its sake, minimal, definitely, sick, because of this. Our families have been in turmoil, talked to our families, may have lost friendships and things of that nature, but that's what we are here to do as board trustees, that's what we've been charged to do. I prefer as board trustees to make our own decisions than to have someone else, some EM come in and make a decision for us, that's just how I view it. I also said on Tuesday night that perhaps we will find a way, and I've asked, I personally asked, the superintendent and our CFO to go back and dig through the numbers again. And I've asked the community to come back, give me some solution, give this, not me, to the board, so when you're out there, ask, everybody has opinions. But we need data, we need hard facts. Give us the hard facts and we will, without any shadow of doubt, I have no idea we will re, undo what we just did in that particular instance, when it comes to happen. Do I feel good about that? No. Now, for military personnel, one law always say, you don't leave your southern place, your northern place, you'll leave your place open, you just don't. And I understand that, and it's a viable neighborhood. But we as board trustees took the action, took a vote, and we move, and are moving forward. And I pray that some way, somehow, we will find a way to maybe, maybe, possibly, go back and do some changes to what this decision was made, I'll leave it at that. But I appreciate the discussion, I appreciate the calm debate. Upcoming meetings? Yes, we're going to close session here after this. Upcoming meetings, Thursday, June sixteenth at six o'clock is our board study session, June sixteenth. Tuesday, June twenty-third at six PM is our study hearings, student hearings, excuse me, thank you. By myself.
Sorry. Sixteenth, is that Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah.
Tuesday, June twenty-third at six PM is our student hearings against Poole, myself, Mr. Joyce, and Trustee Smith. And then Tuesday, June third at six PM will be our board study session. With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting.
I'm going to adjourn this portion of the meeting.
Just properly move, that's important. Call for questions? Any questions? This portion of the meeting adjourned. And I will now, for five minutes, open it up to the public, if you have any questions, you want to make a statement? You have, you have the floor. If not, take a, correct, state your name and address, please.
My name is Danny Spring, my address is two one three nine eight Avon Lane. Um, I just found, I was about to meet today, I didn't really have anything specific to say, but to tag up, I want to just advocate for others. And, um, let you know that while you all are meeting here, parents are meeting somewhere else. And, um, you know, it's a contentious issue and, you know, so that, you know, not a lot to say on that, but I want to urge you all to please reconsider, um, you know, there, there, they're calling the board a risk threat and, um, that you're not representing the will of the people. And, you know, I'd like to have this ten pound stuff, that you, uh, you know.
So you, you get what I'm, what I'm saying, Mr. President.
Please reconsider, you know, um, K two five regular elementary schools are important to parents. I took my children out of grade because I want them in the K two five, because there was issues on playground for X record. So you talk about putting them in with twelve graders, you know, that's a bigger issue. And, you know, but I'm not against the changes that electric, you know, I went to CAS and I was accepted in basic CAS and I like those types of programs. But, uh, Adler is a serious issue for parents, you know, perhaps you could send the break, uh, elementary could have, or, you know, it does things, but, um, so, I just wanted to say that. I did have a preliminary list agreement that the parents are working on, if you are over interested, um, I can give you a copy of that. But, uh, I'm sure other things come out at the meeting that they're having now.
Thank you.
Spring, thank you so much, appreciate it.
And, um, also we, well, I know that, uh, some people wanted to know, on behalf of parents, uh, when was the twenty twenty plan first, uh, put together, you know that it was presented to the board on June first, so we assumed that it had to start, you know, much prior. And, uh, it was their proposal committed from a contractor. And I do love proposal writing myself now. I know that generally, uh, the government entities present a problem and contractors present proposals on how to take it, so we wanted to know, was there a proposal? What are projected costs, you know, things of that nature, um, you know, the, the other things aren't here. But, uh, please consider, reconsider Adler and, um, I think if that were the case, that things might go through movement. Because I do believe electric changes are.
Mr. Spring, thank you for your concern and your opinions, we'll get back to that.
Um, Mr. Green, I just wanted to share with you that we started out on this journey, um, looking at how we can best improve and maintain cost, control cost. Actually, I first mentioned the initiative at the end of December. As we moved into January, there was a committee that was coming, talked about this board meeting. We also at that time convened a group of consultants at the end of the line. Names were posted, they were on the, at the board meeting, or charged at the board meeting. And they did have time during March, February to meet, and I believe their last meeting, I don't have the date in front of me, was right at the beginning of March. Their recommendation was from a committee to the board. They were just simply recommendations. It was the job of the executive cabinet and myself to look at all those recommendations and to then vet that, um, to ensure that we were providing to the board of education the best recommendations that would support the quality of choice and sustainability of our district. And including all those things, um, Mrs. Trump said it pretty clearly on the talk the other day, that, um, the recommendations currently are not from Dr. Chow. They're not from open schools. They're really coming from myself and Cabinet. Imagine the name of the report, actually is something that I was generating because I wanted people to imagine a future that was viable. And a future that included improved quality and excellence for our students for their future. And it was a continuation from what the citizens advisory shared to the board in March. And so, um, the reality is that what we provided was an attempt to ensure that we could present a balanced budget for sixteen seventeen and improve opportunity and quality. The reason Adler was added was because when we had a capacity utilization of our buildings at the K five level, we had four K five buildings. Adler is not the only one, I know a few of them. Um, in terms of capacity utilization, Adler had the lowest capacity. Adler is a nice neighborhood school, I'm not doubting that. I have wonderful teachers at Adler and I have friends at Adler that work there. And my job is, is my heart, and I will say that because it truly is, I care. But the board has hired me to try and provide the best recommendations to the board for fiscal stability and sustainability. I can't make anything happen, if the board then has to decide whether what I'm providing is something that they believe in to move the district forward. There's many different ways in which, uh, you can, um, how do I put it? Um, there's many different things that go into decision making. And often times, we looked at not only the capacity of the building, we also started looking at where are we seeing academic growth the greatest? And there is ups and downs all over the place based upon the assessment that the state administered, so we looked at that. And yes, Adler is a school that is in a great community, as well as Stevenson, as well as Vandenberg, as well as McIntyre. And I think that if we had put any of the K five buildings on that list, there would be outrage, just as you were feeling. And so, the challenge is how do we move towards presenting a balanced budget? Or do we put a budget on the web for others to see that shows we're in a deficit? And so that, that's just how it is, I mean, that's just how it unfolded. So I don't want you to leave and, and think that there was a consultant that did this for the district. This is the pain, the toil, the late nights, the sleepless nights that went into preparing a report. And the report itself did not come to fruition until probably about three to four weeks ago, as we started to put it together. And then it had to be refined, and then it had to be edited, and then we wanted to add children's work. And so, um, and yes, it is, parts of that is all, is moving on to the website. But no, Dr. Chow was not the person that put together the report. It was Cabinet and others around this room here, this table, that put their eyes onto the report to help in creating something that our community would be able to read and understand and digest. And knowing that everyone is not going to agree. But I will share to you, and this is just for me, I am never gonna, I, I, I live here, I love this district. And it's a very hard pill for any of us to make a recommendation for any building to close, including Waze Letterland. And so, but, in the role that I've been hired, I take it so seriously. I take it very seriously. And so, I have to make some hard choices and I have to make some hard recommendations. I know everyone is not going to agree. And I accepted that when I moved into this role, but I will say to every board member that I'm gonna walk in integrity. And I will not, I cannot leave this district, district financially on a pathway that's gonna lead to an outcome that none of us wishes. that none of us wishes to have. So I do understand and I wish that um and as the board president has said, I pray that there is a major windfall, I pray for that, but at the same time, I can't I can't have blinders on. And so the recommendation is from the administration to the board at this point. It is not Dr. Chow.
And then, Mr. Green, you don't have to stand, if you wanna sit, you can sit right here for a little bit. Um, 'cause then the hard comes the hard part for the board, to sit down, deliberate, that's why we did it and the manner from which we did, so everyone can hear our voices. We made it known how we felt. I didn't like when they closed the neighborhood, Kennedy, in my neighborhood. I just live on Hart Circle.
Right.
And I moved from there when I came from North Carolina to North Carolina, straight to Hart, well, on Lasher Force, first Lasher, 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 first, those little townhouse communities, then I moved over to Hart Circle and I'm at um where I'm living at this current. So I'm saying to you, there was a heart, there was a heart situation, those parents had same feelings you're experiencing right now. But I myself came on the board at the same time as Ross came a few months later. We closed Leonard and Eisenhower. Woo! The same feelings, the same passion and the same zeal from those parents, don't get me wrong, we didn't like that either, but as you know, and I'm sure you're stupid enough, you've seen what's happening in Pontiac, Washington, Easton, Detroit, help me out here. All the other majority minority districts that look like us are either or have been under E M emergency manager, where when any emergency manager comes in, none of us, this board, our community, you have no decision, no, the dangers come in and cut and do what they wanna do. We would prefer to do it, work with our parents, the community, citizen advisory group and make our own decisions versus someone coming into our house, as I say, or you wouldn't just wanna come into your home and try to tell you how to manage your own.
Exactly.
Right. That's what we had to do. Now, and this is me personally, if any other board member wants to speak to Mr. Green, I I want it to be immediate open. I'm not an aristocrat.
Okay.
But I'm just, and I would mention that when we have the meeting that after, I'm a product of public education, wasn't one of the smartest ones, you see, but I did har- I worked hard. Not only did I work hard as student, but I helped support my mother who raised four kids, just if you look back on who I am.
I believe you're a good person.
So I mean well, I mean, I mean no harm to anyone, but the people put me in a position to make a decision.
The Southfield, the whole Southfield is gonna be underserved.
And that's where it's.
Inspired buildings.
That's right.
From a logistics standpoint, it should be uh evenly distributed, the schools that are left open, you know, for each area.
And it's and it's so true, we don't disagree with you there, don't disagree with you.
So, that's.
People trying to find ways here, now that we've made this and we can put something, not something, we can put on the website that we are, our net, our fund balance is nothing, now we can go back and I hope we end with like trustee pool wants us to do and others, go back and see where we can possibly save Adler or Rafe, whomever, if you follow me. That's that's what we want to do, but we didn't wanna, I didn't want my superintendent and I to go to Jacob or to CFO, putting something on that website that wasn't approved by this board. I don't look good in orange. And I'm not, Richard Pryor, he may, he can keep you laughing, you know, you know where I'm going with that. I don't know if I can keep a person laughing, that's my fault. And so I'm gonna open the door for others, if you wanna speak, this is your opportunity.
Um, because I was a positive yes.
I'm not. It hurt my heart, but I feel like.
And I'm I'm I have to, you know, I have to remain honest here and sharing pieces of myself. I cried that night, I cried before I left the meeting, I cried on the way home and I cried when I, I cried myself to sleep and I woke up the next day and I remember waking up for feeling that same feeling that I felt the day after my brother was killed. I was wondering, what happened last night, was it a dream, a nightmare, or was it reality? And I'm still, it still sits, you know, very heavy on my heart because I do, I have gotten the calls, gotten the emails, I do hear from the parents. I have parents at McIntyre, the school my daughter's at, when I walked in the building with you and and teachers, I mean, and friends of mine, I lost my baby center, you know, because of this school used to wave and say hi and smile and look the other way and roll their eyes and, you know, so it's been personal and I'm feeling it. But what I will say to some of the comments here, um, the decision was a tough decision and it wasn't a, but it wasn't a rushed decision, um, at least I don't feel it was a rushed decision. When giving the facts of, just as Mr. Green said, the budget, what do we put in it, what do we include in it, how do we do that responsibly? Um, that was really what it was for me, the facts and and I understood, you know, the personal, um, you know, backlash that was gonna come from it, but I believe that the community voted here to be responsible. I work in, my family's the district, I oversee a budget for my program, not nearly as large as the district, but it's a, it's a, it's a budget nonetheless. And when I take it forward, I have to make sure it's, I have to make sure it's balanced. I can't try to run my program with money that's not there and I can't give this aside to superintendent in the district, you know, that I work for, that I'm doing a way that I'm not. I have to be responsible with those dollars there and I have to be responsible here.
And you didn't feel rushed?
I did not feel rushed. I did, I did not feel rushed in terms of understanding the importance of that vote. I would have loved and I did ask, not only publicly and and what I do wanna share because of the, you know, except for the week notice, we get a lot of information, email, we get a lot of information, study sessions Saturday evening, you know, and so we have a lot of time and there's a lot of conversation that leads up, so you kinda already know what you you may or may not be presented with, so your mind's already working. And a lot of times I ask questions about what are some other options, um, you know, and my daughter goes to McIntyre, you know, I would have felt, I'll say this and I'll say this honestly and I really hope you believe me, I would have felt, I would have voted the same way if McIntyre was the school that was recommended to be closed. I would have voted the exact same way, knowing that my daughter, that that meant that my daughter was gonna have to go to another school and that that was gonna make up happens because I understood the importance of the vote, the logic and the fact behind the vote. It doesn't mean I like it, it just means I understand what has to be done and I carry it, I do, I really do, I carry it and I really do pray. I'm saying pray, yeah, I'm saying it too, we probably shouldn't be saying it, but I would say it anyway, I do. And that was one of the things I did when I woke up and I said, no, last night really happened. I went in my room and I said, 'cause I slept on the sofa that night, 'cause I fell asleep on the sofa crying, I went in my room and I prayed and I said, oh, please bring healing to this district, help us heal and recover from it. No one likes that. And I really do hope you take that back to the parents and I hope that matters, you know, that if there's something we can do, I know, if there's something that that I see a hole, please believe, you know, trustee uh pool and trustee Joyce won't have to make that motion, I'll make it as one of the people who voted yes, but I can't make that vote or that motion knowing that that means in a couple of years, emergency managers are coming.
Well, I I just have a brief comment to make, you know, our parents, our teachers, staff, you know, I empathize with them, I understand that, I don't want to lose their job because I understand, I have to be laid off, you know, I understand that. And it's, this economy, everybody needs a job, I understand that. And I understand the parents, most of them I know, the parents and their kids, so uh there's times, you know, we're making tough decisions that we don't wanna make. And uh I've been in this district a little time, my kids graduated and I do not want the future of this to go down. And I joined the board so that I can be involved and make sure that things are handled correctly here and um I've been doing that ever since I've been on board, even before I joined the board, you know, I work with the board and uh, you know, we just want this district to be number one in overall, we want kids to uh want to come here, those schools just have a waiting list to get in. I want our schools to be like that, have a waiting list, come to us out there because we give you a quality education, we wanna continue that. So, you know, Sheila and all that, my friends over there, sister, I understand how it feels, you know, and uh, you know, uh, but something you just, sometimes you just have to make a decision that you don't like, that you wanna make, but you know that it has to be done, something has to be done, so that's why I'm over there, you know, I can go over there and talk to them whenever they want me to, you know, I'm available.
We will, we will. Well, thanks again, Mr. Green, for your comments, appreciate the information. We'll make it before we come, we have the answers to everyone's questions that you put in the comments tonight. Some of them may be on the website already, may want to check the website out.
Oh, we can check them, sure.
Like she said, you can check the December meeting minutes, check the January meeting minutes, that's when the citizen advisory committee was formed and their names are listed, and then check March, I think March is the month I was sitting, the uh, the citizen advisory committee presented their recommendation, so you can go back and get all that information.
For me, it's it's not just about Adler, you know, you could have took Adler and left Bray, you know, but it's it's a whole section on the Southfield map that will have no school, you know, and that's, it it doesn't make sense, but a bigger issue is the abruptness of it, and I know there was some things said and done prior to, but um, you know, it wasn't presented to the public to discuss the alternatives and different things and um, you know, we we feel.
Can I ask that real quick? How many meetings did you have?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, fourteen different Ts and various meetings out in the community.
And and Imagine Twenty Twenty Plan was presented at those?
It was not called Imagine Twenty Twenty. It was presenting and having conversations with the community related to the citizen advisory. And I was not ready to present Imagine Twenty Twenty until I had discussed that with the board of education.
And I understand community participation was wasn't at a high level as well, you know, that the parents didn't show up and, you know, the way they should have, I understand that aspect, but uh we also feel from what we've been told that the board was given something and forced to vote on short notice with limited information. And um, so it's not just about Adler, it's about a whole southern section of Southfield that will have no school of any grade, you know, so.
You have our word that we will continue to look, investigate opportunities, 'cause I don't like that anymore, so I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hope the public being in school, myself frightened.
All right, all right, let me say, we appreciate your comments, thank you much. Anyone else?
My name is Jean Washington, I enter this city, gone four one, which is ten mile south of it, and um I teach in the district, I'm a parent of the district and as a resident and uh I understand completely what you're saying as far as what the transparency and what you know and what you guys knew before we knew, but as community members, um, it was, it does, it was like difficult for us to see, it, what we're seeing is the one we, the the short notice, because what was presented, what we, you know, the community talked, all of that, what we talked about, what we were looking at, all of that, it wasn't what was presented and so I understand that the twenty 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 um plan was something different, but it's like we were sitting, we're talking about apples and then you asked us to vote on oranges, but we didn't get to vote at all, we didn't get to talk about it. There wasn't, it was presented last week to the community and it wasn't, well, let's sit down and let's talk about, this is what the plan is, now let's talk about it. That never happened and so we felt like you you closed the door, all the animals are gone, now you're closing the door and like, oh, well, um, we we knew they were gonna go, but we don't wanna tell you 'cause, you know, you might have been upset. And so that's, I mean, we're we're feeling like it doesn't, it didn't, it didn't set well because, like you said, you knew, you had information that we didn't, so it was like we were blindfired. And it's not saying that it's all bad, but I happen to live in, just like this gentleman said, I lived in that community, we had no school. Eisenhower closed, MacArthur's leaving, there's no elementary schools at all, west of Lasher, south of eleven mile, there's four, five, six options for a parent in a three mile radius, but there's nothing on the west side. My kids have to go up on telegraph to go to school, they have to, because there's nothing on the west side of the city. But we're, all of this is being kept open, all of this is happening and it's all right here. It's like Laker Village, all around Laker Village, there's bustles, there's activity and the rest of Southfield is being left to die because our, my home value is gonna go down because we have no schools around us. You know, why do schools leave it? That doesn't look good for real estate, you know, it's it's the community at the whole. And I'm not, I'm I'm not arguing that there's the academics that we want to do think that are gonna make the community better and I get that, but I'm looking at four million dollars that we're spending in transportation, all our schools are in three mile radius, why are we spending four million dollars on transportation? That should be, that should be something we should be able to cut, oh, why? Because there's, I mean, there's other things that need, that should be able to be cut because we're we're consolidating, we're doing other things, my kids say there should be, there may be some other things that we can do and I think there's gonna be some wonderful things that can take place, like some of the changes that are taking, that are going to be happening, but as community, we never got to have a chance to to talk about this piece. There was two days and I was going, I was in Washington DC with my school, I couldn't come to the meeting, we were gone, we were gone, so I couldn't even get a chance to voice anything and so it was like it was just one weekend, it's like, here's the plan, then and we were, oh, come to the meeting, come to the board meeting, we were all excited to come to the board meeting, there's no way they're gonna vote on the board meeting, we're gonna get to have our, a chance to speak. And that's why I think there was a mass exodus when the vote was had, when the vote happened because people thought we were gonna get a chance to speak, to be, have our voices heard and it never happened because the vote took place. And I know, I'm sure that there's a process that happens, but it, as community members, we felt like we were left out of that process.
Sure. Well, you know what, Jean, I'm just gonna, I'll share this with you, I value everything you said. Of the recommendations from the citizen advisory, I believe every one of those points were reviewed and many of them were part of twenty twenty. The two that I think were a little caught for sure was the Bray and also Eisenhower, I mean Adler. But I will share that it was when I was at MacArthur that you and several teachers circled around me and asked if you could have a new building. And I'm not arguing about.
But didn't they finish?
Yes.
You asked, said you needed to leave MacArthur. I couldn't tell you right then what was going on, but at the same time, um, when I came to speak to different groups, it wasn't the moment for me to tell all the details, but the components of the citizen advisory recommendation, most of them were weaved over. And so the the only one that was not, that was not even mentioned at all was Adler. The sixth or eighth grade was discussed for Bray to relocate those students to Levy, 'cause Levy is going down in terms of numbers. And the other thought was what if we made Levy a K eight? And when you speak to people who know the facility of Levy, it is not a facility that was designed for K eight, how it's structured, you have that whole art and technology wing, you can't put classrooms there really. The back hallway is all science, those labs, middle school, it was designed for junior high school. Bernie is different, Bernie was designed to be a K nine facility. Then they decided to move the ninth graders over to Laker. So it's not only just the move, it's the reality isn't a good move for children in terms of the facility for it to occur. When you look at Bray in terms of the design of Bray, Bray used to be just an elementary, but Bray was also a building that is is older right now, there's a lot of challenges. They kept making on addition, back in nineteen seventy-two, they overbuilt in this district. I shared that in the.
I shared that in the last six, seven years, not only did we close Kennedy, Eisenhower, Leonard, what was the other one? Give me right now. Shays. Those buildings had every set of three hundred and fifty kids in them.
And Leonard is in my neighborhood and it's still closed.
Yeah.
We didn't like it, but we accepted it. And, you know, the building's been maintained, so we don't have a problem with it, you know, because it's still nice and the property's well-kept. But, we want my kids to Bernie and Stevenson.
But, because of this.
We didn't like it, but we didn't have to do it.
Sure. But, because of this declining enrollment, which is a reality, that fourteen, those fourteen hundred capacity of children, if we had not closed those buildings, we would've been even more over capacitated in terms of the capacity was overly, too much. And right now, we still don't miss, we miss the children. But, in terms of the facilities, we could go. I, I could give you, I've shared with the board the numbers that some of our elementaries had been in the past. So, those are the hard, those are the hard choices and decisions.
And if we could draw our children back from charter schools.
Yeah.
Have others coming in.
But, that's the thing that's scary.
All of us have to do that.
Where we are. We're right on the border of Farmington. I can, I, I mean, not me myself, but I, I'm sitting there watching in the morning, there's a bus that pulls up in front of my house that goes to MacArthur. And there's another bus that I think might go to Stevenson, I'm not sure because I don't know the kids, but I see them going somewhere else. And we're, we're splitting kids, you know, we're, we're, we're sending kids to different places in the same community. We're fighting for the same kids. We're having kids that are being moved here and there. And even, you know, like even with the, the university design for Lake Grove, we're still, we're kinda confused about the eight, nine, and the six, eight being in the same building when they're two different programs. And, I mean, those are little things, it's not even important right now. But, there's, there's just the, the fact that we, we do want everyone to have the opportunity, the same opportunities all over. And it'll be awesome to have that, you know, especially in the high schools combined, there're gonna be greater opportunities for the kids, we get that. I have a daughter who is like, we don't have anatomy at Southfield High. She needs to take anatomy, but she can't take it at Southfield High because she's at Southfield High. She wants to do biomechanical engineering. Engineering program is at Southfield High. Anatomy classes at Lake Grove. We need that alignment, I understand that. But, I think the community just felt like we were left out. And that's the, the part that was hard for us and being there. And we got a chance to talk about it before, and then when it happened, it was like, here it is. And we didn't get a chance. And it probably would've been much of the same thing. You can't keep listening and talking and talking, something has to get done. And I understand that, it has to get done. And so, um, now, when we talk about transportation, are we killing ourselves with transportation? Because these kids have to be sent, they're gonna have, all these kids from all over Southfield, they gotta go somewhere. And for my child, is my child still gonna have transportation? She was a student who rode a bus to MacArthur. She's gonna have to now be bused. And will she still be able to be bused to her school? Because those are things that we don't, you know, that we don't, we don't know yet. And so, that transparency from this point forward, we're hoping that there's a lot more because like we, we just got left out. We felt like there was, we have blinders on, like you said, you couldn't do this. We, they were put on us. We were, we were looking right here and there was stuff happening over here. And so, now that the door's open, we wanna be a part of, we wanna be part of.
And you asked to be.
I'm, I'm here, I'm here now.
You will work with us through, I would ask, did you work with us through the process? In a positive manner. Find solutions. And let's find work together to try to find solutions, that's all we're asking.
And from here forward, we have to be teachers, students, parents, administration coming together with the best thinking and the best heart to do what's right for the kids.
But, what was, are you, is there going to be any type of, um, anything that's gonna be put in place as far as bridging, busing, and Southfield Lake Grove physically? Because we have the K one at one building and two through eight as part of physically getting, physically getting those children and parents.
You mean they're supposed to walk across the street?
As opposed to walking across the street. 'Cause I can tell you as a parent at MacArthur, as a teacher, as a, we have parents who tell their kids to walk up to Nine Mile. And I don't doubt that it's gonna, we'll have parents who'll say, well, your son, your nephew, your brother is gonna be over at Bussy, I'll meet you over there. And we do not want our children crossing Twelve Mile, at all.
Very good point.
And, and I live on Twelve Mile.
We'll take it, we'll talk to the city of Lake Grove and Village and work with them. See what we can do.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. All right. With that, once again, a very good conversation, very, very good conversation. Meeting was a journey, but I'm glad I had the opportunity for everyone to speak. So, I would ask the public now, we, we have to go and close session, personnel issues. So, take a final break and we'll come back.